I have noticed this meeting has been provided in a point of direction three D of chapters two thirty five plus nineteen seventy five. How long will this center?
Paul Mier.
Here.
Jose Reyes.
Here.
Judy Nelson.
Here.
Ten Shalay.
Here.
Grace Anne Kelly.
Here.
Philip Valen. Ryan Mathier. Jose Maderas. Brad Nelson.
Here.
Jeff Paletti.
Here.
Thank you, Lorenzo. Daniel McDonald.
Here.
My pleasure is to the flag of the United States of America and into a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Wanted to get this introduced to everybody. We're looking at updating our planning board application.
Agenda items.
I'll second it.
Always fair.
Do they rather that just the the vision said it was not copy of it. Were you gonna like summarize what the differences are? You're using the alone changes when you do.
Right.
Discussion for it.
So right now, we haven't seen this at all yet. So we'll have a discussion tonight and and sort of. We'll have well, something where probably next meeting as as of right now, there's there's nothing great to look at besides what you thought out there.
Much to say, Jim. And just kind of give a reasoning of why your change. But thank you.
Give the motion, Board.
Second, Eric. Alright, so. Monica's been been doing some. Detective work with other towns with some other applications. We we as a board. Changed this roughly. Twenty fourteen. Or twenty fourteen, twenty thirteen. I think some of those had good status, so they should be recognized. Sort of the body gets like the the recorders classes.
Yeah.
And I think some of this came from that. So I have to explain from a more technical standpoint why we were thinking make the changes. So one, one of the one of the biggest things is for priority for the applicant. Alright, there's there's. The. Through all of our communication, our board does. And Monica spearheading this to to make everything very, very clear to applicants to wrap the entire process. So on our application, we we ask some questions and we more often than not get, you know, NAs filled in. And there's not enough information many times. And so then the applicants come in front of us for a hearing. And they're they're wondering why we're asking certain questions. So we're trying to to make the applications here people to to give us the answers that kind of need from the application. And then some of the. Changes in the NLD law that happened over the years, that's that's what this is for the answer. We've also, and Monica's also gotten to when applications are actually submitted. All of the applicants are getting next steps and they're getting firm dates given to them. So there's no more questions of whether or not. They're going to be heard of such a day. Monica's giving the actual dates, the the legal dates, what we have to do things by so that, you know, people understand where we're going as part of the board. So we're basically trying to make it as transparent as possible. This is just another component of it. Reason why I want to get source now is so we're going to have three or four applications within the next couple of months. Alright, one one's now already at Tom's where it was latest preview. The twenty second will probably be here or that. And two other ones are due.
There's two currently.
Two wrong. So it's going to get busy. So I I I wanted to go until you start to take a look at it and go through it while making comments.
Um, the the thing that I I really liked about redoing this is to have in the very front to explain. You know, what the variances are and to let everybody understand, because the question I get oftentimes is, do I have to do a site visit? What is this? What is that? Because if they have an attorney, then it's different. But when it's a layperson, there's a lot of questions about that. And so there's that, but also the next piece, like you said. The the notifications, that becomes a big issue. When do I have to notify? People tend to, as soon as they send it in, they want to start the notification process and they don't do that until they are had a hearing date. And so having this and and right now it's one document that I I I would like to entertain the idea of having the guide and then the application be separate. But that's, so I've kind of put everything in here. Also, I have questions like. There was. Something with regard to public disclosure of. Ownership disclosure and political.
Yeah.
Contribution disclosure statement. Now, I'm using Cherry Hill's template because it was really explicit and I was able to kind of copy it a lot. So. I took it, I added our stuff in. Like right now on number fours for zones, I know that you know ours may be different, so I need to change that out. And those are the kind of. I've looked at this so much that I just I need more eyes on it and more feedback so that I can take to the next step.
I already shared, but the only thing I would I would add, so I I think this is thank you for doing all this. It's a lot of work. And I will share, you know, our our we looked at doing something similar with. These guidelines and the concern was the responsibility of the township sharing that animation and then we missed something or something's different. So but I don't think that's enough of a reason to not put this. I would just add, as as we shared in staff meeting, some sort of statement that maybe Scott and Cracked did as like this is representative of typical variance application. There may be special circumstances, we suggest you seek your own legal advice, you know, something like that, just so that people don't come in. You told me this is the process and how you do this, or this is missing and. We're not bound by this, no matter what. He's trying to be helpful. I thought it'd be good to make it clear to me.
Yeah, I figure, you know, when we have, when the board has what they want in the document, then we'll have the professionals look at it and so have. How does Scott look at it and put those caveats in? And I was also, because it's going to be electronic, I'd like to have live links to where they can go so that if if something's updated and it's different, they have a link to go to it as long as it's electronic. I think that the 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 checklist is the biggest page and it's just much more intuitive when it's like this. That you know that if you are doing a minor subdivision and you can look, just go straight down and look at all the checkmarks. Now it's multiple pages. We'll look at formatting that somewhat differently, but. And then I can put in notes that you need to have it, you know, sealed by the engineer or file map up or find whatever those would be. And I just need to make sure that these are the checkmarks are in the right places, because again, I'm still a layperson on this stuff as well. Also adding in here a digital copy of the full application in PDF. That's something we have to look whether or not we want to do that. I added it in here, but that's obviously. That would require some changes, I think, maybe to our ordinance or whatever. I don't know if that's mandated in the ordinance. But that makes it a lot easier.
Well, the whole application has to be approved. The whole application has to be approved by them. But I think it's probably a good time with. With newspapers changing with, you know, with all the other technology changes that happen at a time, you kind of can at least keep up with it.
It may be on flash drive or via email or pretend that.
Yeah.
For the planner that we get to that interesting, not this division, I think the last or the one before that, add about that too, the little guidance on that.
Alright, everybody go go through that and take some notes. And yeah, I brought a full cup of coffee, so you can go on the line.
I mean, I I went. It it's prettier than what we have. Do I think? It's easier? Not necessarily.
Easier is not the.
Well, I mean, it's still not, a layperson is still not. I think anything when it comes to multiple, like, you know, multiple municipal land use law. Trying to do this on your own, or like, I think what we tried to do with a shed, having gone through the process on that side of it. Even like looking at this, I was like, yeah. Probably not happening.
Again.
No matter what we put out there, it's not going to be. As we're not, we're just not, so I think, but just, yeah.
I mean, we're not sure that the the almost the first line is, and what we always tell people is, we suggest that they obtain professional advice on it. So whether it's legal, whether it's engineering, whether it's planners, depending on the application, that's that's what we we suggest that people. There are people that are just not going to do that. And and so and.
Well, this is a start. I mean, there's a lot of stuff here that I think would be very useful. Most people don't think that way. You know, when they're putting the application together. You know. Is it done? No. Well, it is a good start. I would ask some basic. Red ball comments and things that I spotted in the document, but those are more edits or question marks. So one of the old groupings. Is that okay?
Now, I would suggest the planning board members that since we have this now, bring up the application and print it out or look it out online and just compare the two.
Yeah, I started doing that.
Yeah, I'm sure that we have will be.
Exactly.
And I guess it.
Ties together.
Great job, but yeah, like the.
Some of this is just. First page, you're you're planning for.
Or planning board, I I picked up on that.
Which is the planning board?
I think it was supposed to be like board of adjustment and the planning board. We're just planning board.
Okay.
Right, I can just probably just follow the hand used for it.
And that's about my profile. Don't we always need my votes to improve anything? As opposed to specifically saying. We need majority. There's no difference.
Yeah. Where you are.
And my vote is majority.
At which page?
First page, we're on the most. Like I said, some of these are very. Yeah, and I have a question as far as the ordinance. On application procedures, a third page at the bottom where it says G. Which says step one filing of applications of G. Do we have a lot, twenty five units in this? Councilman? This is on application procedures, step one.
Page four.
You don't have page numbers in. That's G, it says. Multiple residential dwellers.
Oh, yeah, that's something like that can come out.
Yeah, it don't happen.
Yeah.
Doesn't. But yeah, you say if it's, you know, it says. As well as twenty five or more units. Yeah, but we we do have our our round four from affordable housing.
That could be.
People could build multiple units. I doubt that there's something that that's suitable for that, but we can eliminate that. Yeah, you know. Because if there's somebody that does figure out, or there is some something that could be built, they would be subject to the street law. And that was part of our settlement for it. So we took it out and then. I'm just wondering. Uh. Okay, I think.
Here you go.
Yeah.
That was H, the political disclosure statement? Do we need that?
That was a question. I'm doing it, but I I don't even know what that is. It was part of there, so I put it in.
I can see it, because we have all doing here. Anybody who's pointed or elected fills them out, but. But again, we can question. I mean, if it legally has to be there, then it has to be there.
That could be a local ordinance in Cherryville.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, rest of the year.
Yeah, that's a question I have. And going around in all sorts, I don't have page numbers. Cause the address says ownership disclosure statement. And political contribution enforcement. Why do we need that?
We we don't need it, but if you have a larger community.
Right.
Like I was, I was involved in a development in Marstown and the mayor points all the planning board members. So did somebody who was coming in for variance? Were they a large contributor to the mayor's campaign? Like, we're not in that heavy environment. We had competitive elections, but we're not raising. Hundreds of thousands of dollars throughout a campaign. Like in Clinton, they spent ten to fourteen thousand dollars on average for a council seat. We're not, we don't do that here. So it's probably not necessary, but in Cherry Hill and other places.
Church will see from.
Yeah. Yeah, well, of course, I have one. Okay, now I mean, who would service mayors and probably raise seventy five or hundred thousand dollars at least for that. And then that person appoints the planning board, so it's probably wise to make sure the developer or somebody didn't make the majority of that contribution here. Like, thankfully, we're not really thinking that way. It don't play today's that way, but.
Men of Cherryville, I think there were full time employees that makes two hundred thousand dollars a year.
It's awful.
They're pulling me, I mean, oh. That's about all I have. That's it, very much.
Um, the only feedback that I'd like to give is that just reviewing this, I think it does make total sense to have the application and the guidance kind of separated. You know what I mean? And that may help simplify for the average person too. If it's like, okay, I've got this three page application that I need to fill out and here's my, you know.
Yeah.
Self-help paper work of how to get that done. Just the way that this is in its current form, it kind of starts out as guidance, goes to the application and then kind of goes back to some more guidance. I think that would be helpful for Johnny.
I think. Recommending to the board, because I was out kind of reviewing our application this afternoon. That we do take a look at what's there, what can be pulled out of there, because I noticed some things about store more. Management inner applications for certain things that I don't see in here. So I would recommend to board members to kind of take. A look at what we currently got, because I think there might be some things that need to map over.
Well, like the mayor said, that we, that is the best thing to do, because anybody's standing changes or additions and that. One of the most valuable thing for folks. The information about variances, that is probably one of the most important things to me for people that because a lot don't, a lot of people don't unless you're in it. Don't understand the variance for this, the bulk for that, but what do I need? What's going on? And I agree with the mayor too, that when our professional look at it. Can kind of will write the verbiage. With the liability and just to prevent any of that, you know, no matter how well meaning we are. You 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 try to avoid that because it helps also the citizens not get confused with what we're, what guidance we are given. Right, so.
One thing I think might be helpful, but I don't really know the best way to do, but. Starting from like section nine on the application, nine, ten, thirteen, fourteen, a lot of that info is not relevant to all the applications.
Yeah.
And in the beginning of the application, we have like, what is this? This is a minor subdivision, this is a fire major, this is a bulk variance, whatever. I don't know if there's a way to clarify. If I'm coming into a new septic system, does someone, do I need to fill out the accessory use section zone, section thirteen about my pool depth? Like, I don't think I do. Like, it's completely irrelevant. I can go measure my pool and fill it in, but I don't know if there's a way to somehow to each section. Fill this in for this type of application. I don't know the way to come up with that for this.
But wouldn't the guidance kind of help that?
It did to a point, but I mean, but if I'm getting sea variance, that could be for a shed, it could be for a garage, it could be for gosh knows what. And each one of those might have, so I don't know if there's a way to do it a hundred percent, but I'm just wondering if there's more guidance we could give to like parking and loading requirements. Well, it's a residential variance. I don't think that's what to call, right? You know, it's like, so can we even just say that, you know, about what the global residential.
It it's funny because we talked at the. Have a mini meeting about the AI plugin that we're looking to do for website and. Mixed feelings on it. But we are on the head with it. We had talked early on, long time ago, about somehow making this interactive. And putting this into some type of plugin where we went and if you had this type of, you know, you say C, D, whatever this is.
Future septic.
Then it, yeah, septic, then the right thing pops up and a lot of it could even be auto populated on based on what you were. You know, trying to do, and so you're not sitting here trying to figure it out. I don't know something like that uses, but I remember us talking about this a long time ago.
Yeah, I mean, it all comes down to having money, everyone.
Right.
And I put it into.
Two applications a year, I don't, I don't.
Yeah, that that's where it doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, but that would be the ultimate in making this transparent and and easy.
Well, that would be, and that wouldn't happen overnight anyway.
No, although the technology.
Rapidly.
It's amazing how rapidly it's changing.
Yes, it is. So like this one, it decides this, something like this could be already in motion.
Yeah.
For that. And if it, you know, whether it goes one way or the other.
Companies like Conventry's company or any other planning board company or planning company, they may come up with their own.
Yeah.
You know, plugin.
Next year, it could just be a loop tradition, some AI chatbot.
The whole we zoom. It's so.
God help us.
Something that we could do is kind of like how we have the checklists, we could have something like that in the guidance. For the actual sections of the application.
Correct.
Are necessary based on what application. I mean, that's something to think about, whether that's going to be the answer or not, but it's just what popped into my head.
And then two comments on section thirteen. I like that further on, you have the setbacks by zoning district, right? The list, the grid. There's only five. Numbers, right, for each district, five values. If this section thirteen has twenty five or thirty. So if we're going to ask for those, provide a grid, can we get the grid to match everything we're asking for or remove things that we don't like? You know, shed area.
It was not a carryover, like we don't have a secondary from, you know, the aggregate side yard. Those would probably disappear because the line.
Exactly. And the facade sign area too, but I don't know, the D B O is commercial, that's relevant, but I think.
We actually do have this forty eight or it's a four by eight, whatever that square footage.
Because right now we now have ten values on the current application and then the column headers on that section are missing. It shouldn't be like required, opposed, and complies. Okay, so they're missing. Other than that, like, I love the fact that we had a grid, because how does anyone know what your rear?
I was always looking at the old application, you had to fill in your own. It was like, you're looking out, fill in, this is what I, this is what I have. That's one way I was looking at. So this is not accepted to be green and then we align this.
The schedule of uses is something people call up and they want to know, can I do this and this? And then they're asking where to look for it and because of course I refer them back to the to the code. And so now I have to figure out where is it in the code? And if I'm looking for it, if I'm like, it's hard on them. So that's why I did a schedule of uses as well, so that they know.
Yeah, we're, yeah, the cut, I mean, that's all, you know, and E code is. Is not the easiest thing, you know, and we're talking about, it's not the easiest to understand, you know.
Right, we never really get perfect.
I mean, the code look is, you know, you gotta look here, 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 and here in order to get your answer, because it's five implications and so.
Good job.
Well, this is going to be part of the agenda for the next meeting. I would just put another note out to the other board, since we're a little late tonight, to remind them, like maybe the week before. To review this so that they're prepared for the next meeting. Before that, we'll start over again for the.
That's not my, that's not my real house.
So.
Second.
Oh, very.
Albert Culker, five seven just them. So you expect me, I just, I'm, yeah. Having been on Zoom, it doesn't, it doesn't pick up. So to summarize, right, you expect many application in in the next, in the fall and winter, so you find it necessary to create a template. For a simple, clear and detailed application, which we don't have now, is that.
We have an application.
Yeah, but it's not detailed, complete and clear.
But we're looking to update it to make it easier if possible.
Easier.
This entire application process, a lot of times people struggle.
So you pick Cherry Hill template to look into. Right? And it and then you will have copies at the next meeting for the public to read.
Yeah, we can put it up.
Right? And compare with the old application. And see what we understand.
Rather than copies in the next meeting, because we're not gonna, you're not gonna change this, because we didn't put given on feedback, the change this. Yeah, but it, there's still too many things that aren't aligned. It's not worth it, because you're gonna look at the same things we just looked at and be like, well, why is this this?
They're not.
Let us look at and make a draft change next, whatever the next meeting is that we can do this. And then after that, let's put it on, it's a little more concise, so you can take it.
So we can compare it and have.
But now that like the secondary yard, like all this stuff doesn't match for us, let's take that out before we give it to you.
And then we will have informed comment.
Yeah, and it's not uncommon to use other ten, other towns and that as templates. People do it all the time.
Absolutely.
So I, not that I like the AI chatbot, but. I could easily see that it. Would be useful here. And I'm going to object to kind of like the. The document, whatever, because if you have. The same information in two places, like you pointed out, it might be inconsistent. So for an AI chatbot to get it right. You really just want one source of information, which I'm assuming is the E code or whatever, wherever the information is for the application. So. And I don't know timing wise, when you're thinking of this chatbot versus when these applications are coming in, but it would be really, really interesting if. You did get, you know, a trial or whatever for this chatbot and Monica goes in there and pretends she's, you know. Gonna build her shed or whatever, you know, have ten roosters or, and it'd be really interesting to see what it comes up with, but. I think redundant information is always problematic, especially in this day and age of AI that can summarize it for you, so you don't have to go searching for it. So.
I was changing, a few years later now, talk about chatbots. What else is on the public? Got the motion closer, closer call.
I can make comment here. One, one thing, one thing I think we do need to be concerned about with with AI is situation where perhaps someone does something like. They go to the site and ask for questions about, do they need a permit to build a deck or to build a gazebo or something? And then it turns out they're incorrect and end up in, in some sort of legal jeopardy. Or jeopardy of having to remove a structure that they built because they did something that they weren't supposed to do. I think it just bears, you know, from, from the perspective of due diligence, we should probably check with the attorneys on the planning board and the township. To see if these, if the township is accepting additional, some additional burden of responsibility. For any mistakes that the chatbots, which are in all cases are being provided by third parties, are providing. Just something to think about.
Good point.
I'm totally in favor of doing it though, from the perspective that I've extensive, I mean, far more extensive than the average person's. Work, my work, it depends almost entirely upon AI and aspects of AI at this point. And I've come to the point of being very, very comfortable working with the technology. I think we're gonna do ourselves and do the residents of the township a great favor by implementing some of these tools. But I do think we just need to be a little bit careful about the liabilities that it brings to the township and potentially to its vendors as well. It's, it's information service vendors like myself. Something we think, let's think about.
Thank you. I just shared, I, I didn't, um, we were testing it initially, I didn't ask about a specific, um, gap. But I just asked about, you know, zoning, do I need permits? And with that, it was very, um, generic, it just says, you know, you can find zoning information by vis- by visiting the zoning officer's page on the township website. You can access, access various resources related to zoning permits, code violations and other related inquiries. And sends to you directly to the zoning officer's email, um, and it gives her name and phone number. So it didn't actually say yes or no that you would need something or not, and no enough to say you may, and you need to talk to the zoning officer. So we'll see if that's its usual response if somebody gets more specific about a project. But, um, it was pretty thorough on most things, because I added about, I asked, um. About taxes, you know, how do I pay taxes, is something to do with zoning? But it was very clear about, even though about the drop box outside the door, because that's on the website, and then zoning. I asked about licensing my dog and went through it and knew, as I shared in the township meeting, and knew all the breakdowns of the fees. If I didn't do it on time and what I needed, so it was, uh, they were, I asked about trash pickup, so I was curious, it's very tricky. And knew that we didn't offer, uh, this trash pickup is not off, provided by the township itself, homeowners must contact one of several local garden firms. For refuse pickup, the specific schedule for trash pickup and vary depending on that gardening service. So it was, uh, you know, it was somewhat impressive, uh. Did it give you the names of the garden services? It did not, uh, we don't put them on the website, because they're not allowed to endorse.
So, well, what was, what data was given to this box, just our website?
Essentially, yeah, our website, it's just, it accesses.
Crammed through all the different pages to find those.
To find that, yes.
But it may not have gone to like E three sixty around the last.
No, it was, it could have accessed that though, because it is something we asked specifically about.
Right, I, I guess my point is, you know, if you give it, the smarter it's gonna fit in, loop and talk about more than I can, but. Because I've dealt with it a little bit in my job too, but the more training you give it, the more you can give it. Uh, you know, questions and factual answers for it to learn. So the more you teach it, the smarter it is.
First four questions I'm ever asked of it, because then I distribute it to the rest of the township community, apparently I did a cut off my own question, apparently I screenshot. But I did ask about another background, so I knew I had two questions. And it's very, again, it's, it's vague, but they had provides direction on, on, on variances too. So it's a really good plot for variance in Bethland Township, you leave to submit variance application to the Board of Adjustments. This application typically required, if you see permission to deviate from zoning regulations, you find the necessary forms on the website to the zoning officer. And it tells you where to obtain the application on, online, uh, complete the application, submit the application, attend your own hearing. So, I don't know if you're, if you're ready already, uh, but then it says if you have specific questions about the variance process, you need assistance with the application. Feel free to ask it, as a link back to the land use and zoning, uh, emails and phone numbers.
Amazing how it takes to public knowledge of things, you know, but if, if things do conflict, sometimes it kind of makes its own decision too. But we're not doing this like tomorrow, so we can study, just like we've done for other things. The errors that we made, you know, and what people, what towns did, you know, about it.
Yeah, I think, I think this is far enough away from like using AI for, for this. We, we did vote to use the AI chatbot, and we do plan on using a four dog cat license starting in January. The only thing the AI is really doing there is going to analyze the rabies vaccination as within the timeframe. And so that'll be a good test, because it's one specific case, is yeah, and then. So Monica, to tell people, it'll tell people you're rabies, it's not current enough, it needs to be delivered and rejected. And not send your check in or accept payment before you even say it, it'll be a good test, because there's so many variables.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be interesting, perhaps even entertaining to test it when we get a chance to test it.
But I want you to test it.
We've got the right approach, which is, we need to test it and verify it, trust but verify.
Yes, yeah, for sure. It's scary how good it can be, but it's also just.
I could give you some interesting stories, but I won't bore you with them.
And some very interesting.
All right, reports, Mitch.
I believe.
I'd like to be nice, be nice.
I've got one change, on the second page under public comments. I believe that I either made the motion or the second, but I know that it was I didn't make. And same thing to close public, uh, comment.
Yeah. You guys for dirty all of this.
And so that. Okay.
Other than that, we're going back to.
Make a motion to accept the August eleven twenty one five minutes as amended, second.
All was better. Part of my discussions, and I recovered that pretty thoroughly. Uh, the, the other thing, we had two, two ordinances that we're looking to address at the township committee level. Uh, one will stay there because it's not, uh, not related to land use. Uh. It's about Heather's, um, licensing. And, uh, right, right now, if somebody goes in for a background check, the municipality covers those fees and you won't be doing that. So, um, that'll stay again with us, just wanted to keep everybody updated. The other one is we revisited that parking ordinance from twenty twenty-two, I think it was. Uh, it was never approved by DOT, even though there are roads, it's like we do a speed studies, those go to DOT for final approval. And, uh, Mr. O'Grannick has some templates and ideas, uh, Mr. Kenny was useful. And Mr. Lindsay as a police officer is very useful in this as well, can see if they apply and can you keep the law. That may come back here, because there's probably going to be a split between a motor vehicle, uh, violation of the state police will issue. And then there'll be instances that it will be a zoning issue that the zoning officer will then be addressing for certain types of vehicles. So that we're probably coming here for a next year plan performance. Uh, I think that was the, the only, like, technical thing from the.
So the statement of improvement, because they forgot on it, they ignored it.
They, they kind of ignore, they kind of ignored it, but it, it had flaws, so we're happy to, to reveal it and get it, get it. Just on the right, the right leg, so. Uh, well, yeah, I was gonna share that as a separate, uh, a different way, but I'll say, yeah, we, we. Can I cut you in on that? Sure, I know what you're gonna say, so. Always. Things are made nice. So, what, what, what are the challenges that, that we have, we're very limited in scope under the M I U L to do certain, certain jobs that we as a planning group have. Right? And in the chaos, we've, we've, we've looked at, we've been asked to, looking at various different things to help the magic committee. Um, build and assemble certain ordinances, we're looking at different things, all right? Um, one, one of these aspects, um, our attorney, last time he asked of us, he basically said, you guys can't do that. Can't look at, decide and have to stay with, with the actual project committee, and the project committee's been busy. Um, we don't want them to get burned out either, um, and there's, there's things that we can help with. But we have to stay within the law. So one, one of the aspects that is in forty fifty five D twenty-five, okay, is. So when they have issues, one, one, one of the issues that comes up a lot is noise, all right, within the town. And we have a piece in goodwill, physical or good order component, which doesn't have a lot of, uh, ability to be. Enforced, um, and there needs to be some discussion on that. So, as you're trying to stay within the law of what we can, okay? Um, so under forty fifty five D twenty-five, um. Section fifty, all right, the planning board may, all right, perform such other advisory duties as assigned to it. By ordinance or resolution of the governing body, for the aid and assistance of the governing body and or other agencies or officers. So we could go through and we could recommend. Send it back to them, they still vote on it, they still can kick it back, they can, they can not adopt it, right? But it gives us the legal power, at least, to be able to discuss it within our group. All right, and then officially make actual recommendations legally, legally speaking. So what it does have to be through a resolution, now you can do it for one item, or you can do it through a blanket. Where you can send something down here, a, a specific item that you guys want other, you know, others, other members of the public. I use the word to discuss, um, so you can do it for an individual or a, or what fires through that board. So. So maybe you know what I'm gonna say, I don't know, I, I think it aligns with, with what, so what I was gonna say was, uh, we've had a lot of. Uh, zoning complaints, particularly in one neighborhood, that are all residential. And, um, I, I believe most of them are getting resolved. Once notice of violation is issued, people are deciding not to continue with whatever action they're, they've decided to take. The, um, there was a majority of residents in this neighborhood that did request, uh. And speaking to them almost daily, uh, an addition or change, a piece in good order, and or an additional ordinance. And, but I share with them. Was that we generally take action based on, on the volume of incident. If we know that's an issue, then we will address it, and I use, with these residents, our animal ordinance as a perfect example. I shared with the resident that even though I am mayor and I disagree with our animal ordinance, because I think we should have something in place to general guidelines. We have not had complaints in four years, so the planning board and all the township committees decided to take action on that. Just if you want something, please come to the planning board first, so the planning board can say twenty people came to the meeting. And they're asking that the piece in good order ordinance be changed. Now, I had that conversation with them, and I think it was very clear, and we have just, they're two wonderful, faithful attendees. And, and, and not the twenty people that, that, you know, reached out to me over the past few weeks, and then they, it's at a township meeting, and that's fine. Because I think what, what's been happening over there is, is getting resolved from what I can tell. And it may not be an issue, so maybe they've decided that, 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 that's fine as, as well. Um, I will share as a side note, a piece in good order ordinance was used effectively once, even though I think it's an horrible ordinance. That needs a lot of modification, largely because it didn't come here for this advisory portion of it, even though it's not. Uh, technically a land use, and that's land use aspects, but it really is a township committee ordinance. Uh, but it was, there was an issue with, uh, having an animal, so it was not really an animal control issue. It was, uh, it was an animal management issue in a neighborhood where somebody felt like one animal was being used to harass a family. It was, I've talked to the strategy test, but it occurred enough that, uh, both our animal control officer and state police issued the violation within the piece in good order. It ended up in the court, and it was effectively resolved in the court because of that issue of, uh, notice. So it, it had one, one success in, in four or five, five years, I guess. So I wouldn't touch, I wouldn't touch this, um, I mean, I think that ordinance needs help, but it's a very difficult ordinance to, to address. I wouldn't touch it unless we see, um, because we, I, I would like to see direction from those who are impacted by it. So if we go to touch it, we're guessing where we're helping, whereas if residents come and say this is the issue we had with, with noise. Or whatever the disturbance of peace is, we're just kind of picking stuff out of the sky. So I'd rather have residents come in with actual complaints that we can address and try to fix. So I think we're on the same page regardless. That, that's it for like actual land use township stuff, uh, fun stuff, I'll, I'll just share, there's some township committee meeting, uh. But, uh, I mentioned here, so we get as much capacity as possible, as many of you know, the building area make over the Montauk is, um. We renovated a house for the Lynn family over up in Church Road, uh, the announcement at their press conference was over at the Red Mill and Clinton. Uh, committee man Kenny joined me as a veteran, um, there were a lot of Bethland Township residents over there, it'd be nice to see. Uh, they'll be looking for volunteers, they start demolition, uh, September twentieth, they don't need volunteers for demolition during the election, that's probably the dangerous part. Um, much fun to stand over there. Started by, so, so there were, there were volunteers from September twenty-third to twenty-ninth, and then September thirtieth will be the reveal. Um, and even if you don't have actual skill, there will be people to sweep up, carry, do whatever you may wanna do. Uh, the day over about seventy votes a day, they do a general contractor, um, guiding them. Yeah, I wish that was interesting, uh, New Jersey is, I think, fast becoming a, uh, recognized film state. Our film commission won an award recently, uh, over, uh, over California. Uh, so I went down to the, our DCA construction office to talk to them about getting, uh, permits. Oh, we are not permits for the inspections done within nine days, uh, kitchen and two bathrooms, or whatever else they go into the house. Did not get laughed at, was told that there's actually a separate division, uh, that's now been established because of the filming in the state. And then, um, they go out to handle all that, I received an email confirmation that those folks have been notified. So, it's one, one point of efficiency in our state.
You can't do that, because move in tomorrow, it's something you have to go on.
Yeah, I laughed hard, literally, the producer called me when I said, I, I said, my zoning officer can issue the permits very quickly, inspections. Uh, it's a whole nother story, and we don't have, they're not in house, I really don't have any trouble with it. But, uh, but I will say state DCA and, and, uh, I will share the, the new, um, director down, down at the local DCA office. Um, I, it is very pleasant to speak to, and I actually did compliment him, because I shared, I, for a long time. I would get complaints from residents about how long it took to get inspections, regardless. And, uh, that has not been the case in the past two or three years, so I think it's a compliment from the air public. That's.
You expect me to follow that?
I know, I, I'm good tonight, for what he said.
I got four hours.
Well, I, uh, I've been using Zoom. And unfortunately, I had to use Zoom, and the quality of sound is really bad. It's very low, uh, when speakers get up here, you can barely hear them. And then when there's more than one person speaking here, you don't hear anything. And it really needs to be improved, it's just. I don't think it's a major, um, step to take, but needs to be improved.
Yeah, we all understand that.
I was gonna say, today I am having no problems at all with Zoom, it's, it's been clear, I heard Suzanne perfectly clear, um.
It's, today it's been very, very good, uh, I haven't had that much of a problem with it. Um, I do know sometimes it is better to have a headset on with, when doing these video teleconferences.
Uh, I don't discount the issues, and I think I totally agree with Jose when he points out that when multiple people are talking at the same time, it gets confused. A couple of things I can do is I can look for new firmware, see if maybe we're not completely up to date. And the other thing we could do is look and see if maybe there's a new device that does a better job.
I, I think you're gonna need a voice muxing thing in the, um, in the room there. Because no matter what you do with audio, i- you're gonna have all these different things getting summed into the pipeline and you need something to vox it out, vox one person out at a time.
We need to do a little bit more investigation on this, but I totally accept Jose's concern.
I mean, I, I mentioned this at the, at the last planning board meetings, I did one of the township committee meetings by Zoom. I think some of the onus is on us, um, I think if you have a lower type of speaking voice, um, a little bit more on the baritone side versus I have something that projects, I think he complains about it wrong so. But, but I do, I have loud voice, it, it, but it's good for types like this, but some of us don't. Um, like I was saying about a couple of the committee members, um, they speak very softly or not. You gotta be more self-aware when you're on these things, and unfortunately for the public too, the, the tendency is to stand up. Barbara Porter, and, and you're speaking in a manner, I think we have to be cognizant, um, that we have to be at the mic, we have to actually almost face it. And, and i- if you're looking down, if you're like this, i- it's not gonna project, it, it's not gonna project that. That's what I noticed when, when I've been on Zoom.
Uh, Lou, we can look and see if there's other, um, products, but I, I will share it too, just quickly, I looked up, you know, owl labs. You know, this, this is a first generation, they're, they're actually just launching the fourth generation now. And even the gen three, um, has a grid mode, a special speaker mode, counter angle mode and manual mode, which would probably, the grid mode would probably be helpful for us here, uh, so we, we can investigate it, I don't wanna, we're all pretty cheap around here, but it's a, the, the owl's about a thousand dollars, it was a thousand dollars five, four years ago, five years ago. It served us and we replaced our laptops about every five years here, so maybe it's time to replace the gen one owl. Uh, and then look and see if there's still about a thousand dollars.
It's, I think it's done a good job for us and it's time to, uh, you know, work on to see if there's something else that, uh, you know, in the same family of products probably, they can do a slightly better job or better job.
Yeah.
Well, well, even as we're talking now, you can hear. And if we have more than what we have now, it becomes a problem, because I've been on Zoom too. And also, we're not like some other boards, you know, where, that have mics at each, so one goes off when the other, yeah, and it becomes almost like a hear me type thing, it blocks out the other.
Let's try to look up, because I, I think the owl does offer microphones now, that's what I think with the grid zone is.
Yeah.
Help block out, you know, the other background ones.
About six months ago, there was a progress upgrade that dramatically improved it.
Yeah, they, they've expanded microphones, like I knew they had, I think it was a giant two, but now they have a grid system, it will probably be.
Yeah, I think this isn't a Zoom issue, it's a microphone, uh, environment issue, does that mean a lot?
A million Zoom and Teams meetings for work, and when everyone's sitting in front of their laptop, speaking directly into their own.
Everything works great, it's just when you're in an environment where there's two microphones or one microphone and one guy's spinning around over here on the aisle and whatever, that's when you get the problem, so it's really more, it's not Zoom itself.
I just did now with you, I'm just gonna overdo and that's what, and you're back then, you don't get it on Zoom.
And this conversation back and forth has been, has been perfect.
Hey, I was gonna say it sounds phenomenal from my point.
We're complaining about it, so it's. Port back.
I respect your.
Yeah.
Um, I just wanted to rhyme the board that there's only five meetings left in the year. We only have a meeting in October, um, and we did, uh, get two, um, applications in. The first one is, uh, is, uh, due October eleventh. The next one is due the twenty third for the forty five day, which is right in that overlap. So we have September twenty second and October twenty seventh meeting. Now, um, Tom is going to have them ready for the twenty second, but I'm just, if we get anything more, we're, we're in that danger zone where we don't, we might need a special meeting in order to meet or ask for an extension from the applicant. And we only have one in October and one in December, so, um, but we do have the two that just came in and we have the two that were deemed incomplete and we're just waiting for them to resubmit, so. Um, and I know that there's at least two more out there.
All right. Anything else?
My phone.
You wanna be Phil?
You wanna be Phil? I thought that's why you.
Call this meeting to a journey. Okay. I'll second that.
Aye.
Aye.